Good evening. Today is Thursday, June 28, 2018, and we're here for a Cabarrus County Board of Education meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. First, I would like to thank our SROs who are here with us tonight. Deputy Chris Dow from Odell Elementary and Deputy Daniel Wilson from Cox Mill Elementary. Thank you for being here. Next board, we will adopt the agenda.
Do I need to do that first?
Okay. Okay, so Mr. Powell's on the phone tonight, so hopefully he can hear us. He's on my cellphone right here. When he speaks, I will try to lift it to the microphone. So we'll see how this goes. We don't do this very often. So Rich, before we do the agenda, can we set the agenda and then you'll give the explanation of what we need to do?
That'd be fine, yes.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the June 28 Board Meeting Agenda.
Still move?
Second.
So Dr. Kirk made the motion, Mr. Harrison made the second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so Vince, you good with that, any hearing thing?
Yes.
Okay, 7-0, okay. Thank you. So now I'm going to ask our attorney, Mr. Schwartz, to tell us about the rules around having a board member be remote, because I believe we do need to suspend one policy.
Yes, you do. You have a board policy 2302. It's called Remote Participation in Board Meetings. It was adopted in October of 2016, and it allows for remote participation by a board member in a board meeting and would allow that board member to vote and participate in the meeting by phone or other electronic means, with certain other caveats and requirements that I won't go into. The policy does require that the board member be present for the meeting and not just for any particular item on the agenda. The board member participating in accordance with that policy is allowed to vote by voice vote. On the other hand, you have a board policy 2341 called Quorum that was adopted two months prior to the first policy I mentioned that specifically says that attendance and voting remotely by telephone, internet, or otherwise may be permitted at an emergency meeting but is not permitted at a regularly scheduled board meeting. An absent board member may listen in by telephone, internet, or otherwise at a regularly scheduled meeting but cannot participate or vote. Remote voting or attendance will not be permitted for personnel or student hearings either. So you've got two policies that are clearly in conflict with regard to the voting rights of a remotely participating board member, and my suggestion would be that you suspend one of these policies for tonight's meeting. And given that the one dealing with the remote participation in board meetings is the more specific of the two policies and the more recent of the two policies, I'd recommend that you suspend that portion of board policy 2341 that would prohibit remote voting for tonight's meeting. And then I would also recommend that this be referred to the Policy Committee for cleanup. The vote to suspend policy 2341 for the limited purpose of allowing voting would require a 2/3 vote.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion as you specify.
Can Mr. Powell vote on that because it affects him?
No.
Okay. I'm just asking.
Second.
Okay, so Mr. Walter made the motion, and who seconded? Dr. Kirk made the second. All in favor suspending policy 2341 for this evening? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that vote is 6-0 with Vince abstaining.
I'm sure they include sending that policy to the committee for review.
Yes.
That's part of...
Yeah, he'll just send it. We don't need a motion for that, I don't think.
Now, question, so he will be able to vote with us?
Right. With that vote having been taken, Mr. Powell can now fully participate in the meeting, including voting.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so now we'll move on to our original only budget item, or agenda item tonight, the approval of the final 2017-18 school year and fiscal year budget amendments. Discuss.
Thank you very much, and I do want to tell you how much I appreciate you holding this meeting for me every year. It allows me to scrape every penny out of the state and federal accounts and keep them here in Cabarrus County to serve our students. And so, again, I appreciate you allowing me to do this every year, so...
And we appreciate you making the most of the funding we receive.
Thank you. So we'll go to the first budget amendment. Many of these are familiar to you. We received an additional fuel allotment from the state. Some of the smaller allotments, we received a equipment allotment and then reimbursement for our tags and licenses for our buses. As you go on down, you can see, starting in the middle of the page with the bigger adjustments, those are called guaranteed allotments. So the state will just pay and we record the budget at the end of the year. And so those are for things like the veteran teacher retention bonuses, also for annual leave, longevity, all those payout-type things that you see there by the state. And then the final one on this page is the bonuses for the highly qualified North Carolina teaching graduates. And so some of those things are the things that you heard about for this budget year. Go on to the next page, because there's a little bit more. This one, the budget amendment that you see on page two, is because of the work that we do with our position allotments, we have to make this adjustment because we are paying folks higher than the average allotted, so we're making very good use of our money, and this is kind of a reflection of that. Any questions on state? Okay, we'll move on to local. We've talked about this a couple of times, we're just now seeing the budget amendment for it. So this is because we have less attendance in our charter schools, which is absolutely wonderful. So the county has been good in future years. When the charter school increases, they'll pay for that, they'll send the money. So when the charter school decreased, they took those dollars back, and that's the budget amendment that reflects that. Going on to our federal budget amendments, these are just small budget amendments, reclass, mostly having to do with our indirect costs, because it's just a percentage of the expenses. It changes as the expenses change. Minor adjustments there. Capital. You'll see these are just our entries that are required at the end of the year for our school bus leases that DPI lease on our behalf. We're making adjustments for the payment where DPI sends down, and we're also adding the value of those buses onto our books. And so there were 18 regular yellow school buses that came in, and there were two buses with EC lifts that are reflected here. And the final one, I believe it's the final one. No, two more. Next to the last one is child nutrition. When we decided not to increase prices, lunch prices, last year, the board made that decision. We knew that it was going to come out of our savings account. So this is the adjustment to reflect the dollars that are needed to come out of our savings account, because we made the choice not to increase school lunches at that time. And, sorry. The final one is our local special. Again, this is our grants, restricted funds that go into this account. You can see, we made a budget amendment. We had a phone system outage earlier in the year. That's reflected there, and then just minor adjustments. Again, the final one dealing with indirect costs, because it's a percentage of expenses. Are there any questions on any of those budget amendments?
Board members, any questions? Vince, any questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I will take a motion to approve that the final budget amendments for fiscal year 2017-18 be approved as presented.
Still move?
So, was that Mr. Harrison? Mr. Schumaker made the motion, Mr. Harrison second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the vote is 7-0 to pass this. Thank you, Kelly.
No, he said, I think he said aye.
Vince, did you say aye or nay?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. So the next item we have is the board decision on closing of Beverly Hills, and I will take a point of privilege and just introduce with some comments. So first of all, whether we all agree or don't agree, thank you for coming here and being a part of the, I'll say, energy that supports school systems, one or all, as the case may be for the board members. Before we start our discussion, I think it's important for the community to better understand how school boards and the boards of commissioners must collaborate and cooperate to provide the infrastructure for our students and teachers. I'm sure that many of you don't know, we have none of our own money. We can't tax, we can't raise money. All of it comes from other sources, as Ms. Clutz said, local, state, federal. On occasion, there will be grant money and so on, but the bulk of our money is from the state, next, the local money, and then finally last, the federal allocation. Over the past few months, our two boards and the cabinet senior staff of both agencies have formally met twice regarding the county's ability to fund the district's requests. Both senior staffs have met many more times. The county asked us to work with them on their budget challenges by adjusting some dates on our 10-year capital plan. It is a give-and-take process to meet needs while adjusting our goals to provide seats for our students and other locally funded items like technology and buses. The state requires that the counties provide the facilities, utilities, and other maintenance costs. When the state has budget challenges, they tend to adjust their participation in supporting schools in subtle ways, like extending the time when the state replaces a bus or raising the ratio of students to assistant principals. The general public doesn't see that. They don't understand those are hidden in all of those session laws that come out of Raleigh. Unfortunately, the county has nowhere to push their educational cost. When our district grows, the county must fund the extra space, most often in mobile units, and they also must fund the extra buses. We currently have between 4,000 and 5,000 children learning in mobile units. Some schools have more children in mobile units than the entire capacity of Beverly Hills Elementary. I only say this to help you visualize the balancing act we have of meeting what one community desires against the backdrop of the whole district. We are all Cabarrus County together when it comes to educating students. This spring, we had to make the choice between adding seats with the rebuild of Arbrown-McAllister or build a new middle school. We need the middle school urgently, so that has been prioritized. Elongating our construction projects by adding an additional year to the total construction and opening process has also become a strategy to reduce the amount of money needed in any one particular fiscal year. I hope that you each know that we have listened sincerely, have taught countless hours about this dilemma, and prayed for wisdom and creativity. I would like to call on Mr. Schumaker to share a proposal, which we hope will be seen as a good faith effort to blend the desires of the community with the needs of the district. Mr. Schumaker?
Thank you, Ms. Furtinbaugh. And before I get started, I'd first like to say so many thanks for all that you all have done. Many of you have sent us many, many emails, very detailed emails. You have put together detailed presentations. I just received one yesterday, or just a couple days ago, that was over 40 pages, and a lot of detailed effort went into that. I know each and every one of you has a real heart for your school and for your community, and this is what makes Cabarrus County a great community to live in, because there are other communities just like yours out there that feel exactly the same way as you What we're doing tonight did not arrive lightly. We've been struggling with this for many months, and we've been trying to figure out what is the best and most appropriate way to deal with our growth problems and with our aging schools' problems. Some of you have talked about what happened in 2015 when we first talked about Royal Oaks. The decision to build that as a larger school, as a swing school, was the big object of what we were looking at, because we did not know what the growth was going to look like in this county, but we knew it was coming and coming quickly. So before I get started on the proposal, I'd also like to bring up a fact that we've been accused of not keeping up Beverly Hills, that our staff has not done a good job of maintaining that school, and that is just the opposite. Over 1,992 work requests have been made for Beverly Hills. Of that, 1,989 have been completed. We have tried to do everything we can within the monetary power that we have to maintain that school to the best we can. However, those work requests cannot replace systems that continue to age, and just like roofs that we have had to replace on many other buildings around the county, we also have aging systems in that school that require a tremendous amount of capital to replace. We have a boiler that's installed in 1986, still operating in that school. We have a chiller that's installed in 1998. A lot of you don't know what these types of devices are, but they are what keep the creature comfortable at that school the way it is, and it makes it successful for the children to participate. That was installed in 1998. It's using a product called R22, which will be outlawed, or won't be sold anymore as of 2020. So it's one of our many systems that we have that are struggling. We also have electrical wiring and panels in that building that exist from the original installation. To replace those requires going into walls and under slabs.
There's not been a second on his motion. He cannot go into explanation like that until there is a second on a motion.
There's not a motion yet, ma'am.
Well, you said he was going to make a motion.
No, I said he was going to give a proposal.
Well, there has to be a second on a motion.
There's not a motion yet, ma'am.
Well, he needs to make his motion.
Mr. Schwartz, do we need to make a motion? Or can Mr. Schumaker make?
There needs to be a second motion before there is discussion.
Well, you've got this on the action agenda, and...
There needs to be a motion and a second and discussion.
If he's introducing a motion or giving background...
Yes.
You could do that for a limited purpose. The chair has some discretion in allowing that.
And at the end, I believe he will make a motion.
Right.
Are you introducing a motion?
Yes, I was just giving background to the introduction.
And then you'll have a chance to speak as well, Ms. Carpenter.
Well, there needs...
The chair has discretion to allow us to go on for a little while.
I'm trying to give a little background as to where we are. So the electrical wiring and many panels dates back to 1953. The piping in the building, under the slab and in the walls, dates back to 1953. Part of what we're concerned about, the staff is concerned about, and us as a board is concerned about, is the fact that if we have a major system failure during the school year, then we have to do something with the students, because the fixes that were required to take care of that issue, we would have to move the students somewhere else, because it would not be an immediate fix for a day or two. It would take several weeks to resolve those issues. So that is kind of what we have in the background of our head. Now, can we make that school last a year longer? We did move it to June 19, and we've talked about, could we make it last a year longer? We don't know. The big thing is that we're just looking at risk management, and that's what is now at the basis of this particular proposal that we have. So what is the goal? The goal was to create a planned school closure, site review, and capital plan progression to keep the Beverly Hills student population together while the viability of a new facility on the Beverly Hills property is determined, and if viable, prioritized for funding. Number one, we approve the closure, and this is the motion, to approve the closure of the current Beverly Hills effective June 2019. Dot point under that is to move the students while there is a ability to swing the school together. Wyancoff is expected to be the STEM option. Avoid the potential of a mid-year move to multiple sites as a result of unforeseen maintenance issues that could cause system failures to accomplish operational savings and ongoing maintenance expenses. Number two, begin an architectural and engineering review and a site plan, high-level design, in January of 2019. This would be commissioned by the Board of Education with an outside firm with the goals to achieve the following. First dot point, review the cost not to exceed $20,000 and request be on the commissioners' August agenda for funding approval. Design must achieve a minimum of a 25% building core capacity, or it must meet current building capacity and provide space for other district functions, such as the technology department. Provide an estimate of building a new facility on the previous BH Beverly Hills Elementary School site. Number three, based on the results of the architectural and engineering review, if the goals for capacity and space are achievable, and if the CCS admin numbers...
No, ADM.
ADM numbers can accommodate not building a new elementary school for greater growth seats, place a new Beverly Hills Elementary School on the 10-year capital plan. And based on the... Next dot point is based on the county's preference to fund portions of a construction project over multiple years. Begin site preparation as soon as funded with new building construction to start on or after July 2022 with a two-year construction schedule based on a cleared site. This "based on a cleared site" means that we would have already done the demolition on the building, and it would be ready to go upon approval by the commissioners. The priorities remain to fully fund one new middle school and the expanded Arbrown-McAllister Elementary, and obtain land for an expanded replacement high school prior to funding the Beverly Hills Elementary School project. Number four is to designate funding. The passage of... And this one is in your control, because you're voters. The legislature delayed this year the vote...
Mr. Schumaker, you need to complete the motion.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry. All right, so designate funding. The passage of the state school construction bond or the quarter cent sales tax increase with proceeds to be used for county and school construction needs must be achieved to avoid further delay in achieving the 10-year capital plan. Second dot point is, the Board of Education, together with the county commissioners, will make the final determination on the funding priorities and distribution to meet the capacity needs. That is the end of the motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
I would like to second the motion, please.
Okay, Mr. Schumaker made the motion, Mr. Harrison seconded. Discussion, please. Ms. Carpenter, do you want to start?
I'm going to make subsequent to motion.
Go, Vince.
Okay.
Vince, do you want to make comments now?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to hold the phone up to the mic, we'll see if it works.
You'd already recognized Ms. Carpenter.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Carpenter, do you want...
Well, let him make it.
Vince, okay. Go ahead, Vince.
Hear me?
Yeah, it's as loud as it'll go. I'm not sure, it's going to pick up on the mic, but we'll see.
Okay. That's fine. Just interrupt me if you can't hear me. I don't talk very long, so it won't take just a few seconds. I don't support the proposal as presented because it very clearly in the first point closes Beverly Hills. No matter where you put those students and how you put them together and what combination you provide for them, I still believe closing Beverly Hills in this manner will not result in anything productive done on that site. I think that once Beverly Hills is closed, then it will be closed for good. I do not trust that anything will be done in good faith. And aboveboard, I know that you don't like to hear those terms, but I think we have a pretty clear demonstration from our last board meeting, June 11 meeting, that there's clearly a distrust between the community and the school board. So I don't support this because it closes Beverly Hills, and I don't think it would reopen after that. I would, however, support every other point of Mr. Schumaker's proposal, except for number one, which does not close Beverly Hills. I think everything else can be accomplished without closing that school. I think the comprehensive evaluation can be done, and actually, a couple other points I don't support. Let's just take the $20,000 from somewhere else in our budget. $20,000 is nothing that we need to go before the commissioners for, in my opinion. That's the end of my comment.
Okay, Mr. Schwartz, can I reply to him, just on his one point?
You may.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I need to. Vince, I just wanted to share that part of the reason behind going to the commissioners for the money is to get their buy-in, and so they have... It has been communicated to the commissioners. They will not consider it as a vote, but it has been communicated, and there seems to be general interest in supporting doing the study.
Madam Chairman, just a...
They can support it without funding it.
Yeah, but you know, the money always helps. Okay, we're going to go on to Carolyn.
Just a comment, actually, on this. I have to... I respect every member on this board. We've all worked very hard on this, but I have to respectfully disagree with the thing about the system going out and you've got to have somewhere to move. We have other old schools, and that could happen to any of those schools, and we would run into the same situation. That could happen at Coltrane Web, that could happen at McAllister, and we would run in the same situation. And so, don't use that. And then I've heard the situation, "Ooh, it's 65 years old. Ooh, it's ready to put out pasture." Well, honey, I'm 65 years old, and I hope to God. I hope to God. I've got a few more decades left in me. So let's not use that one, okay? So let's not use that one either. So that's... But that one, we've got. That could happen to any of them, and we all know that we did have a situation where we did have one of our younger schools. The system went out on that, and we had to deal with that. So it can happen anytime. So that one will happen. So you have your motion, you have your second. So I'm going to throw a wrench in the works. I'm going to do a substitute motion, okay? I can do that. So I'm going to put a substitute motion out there. My substitute motion is, keep Beverly Hills open, and why it is open. Get a third-party assessment for renovation for a new school on the site for 400 students. That's kind of the first part of it. Keep Beverly Hills a community STEM program. Third, put Beverly Hills on the 10-year plan for replacement. And that's to put it on there when we put it on there, put a year with that, but put it on our 10-year plan. Also, when we do that, the children would move to a school that would have sufficient seats available for the STEM program while the new school is being built and students would be... After completion, they would move back to Beverly Hills. And the sixth thing, which I've heard a lot of comments when we had the people talking, was make sure that Beverly Hills is added to the cropper's realignment program, because I heard that over and over, they had not been added to that program. So that is my proposal.
And if it needs a second, I'll give that second.
I'll click first. That's the second.
Well, I got two seconds on my substitute motion.
Vince, I think Rob snuck in there before you, so we'll count Rob's.
Did you mean to skip number four?
Well, I just... I put number four, added that to number one. I added one and four together to make that all one.
Okay, so I guess we'll have discussion on Ms. Carpenter's motion first, to keep it open indefinitely.
Well, to keep it open, if we keep it open and do that assessment and everything, and then we're adding it to the 10-year plan, and so then after the assessment is done, then we'll find out what they're going to do, and we're adding it to the 10-year plan, to all of that works. We're going to keep it a school, is basically what I'm saying.
I'm sorry, Vince? I'm sorry, Vince? Oh, we heard some, some noise come through there. Okay, so, just, whoops, I'm gonna turn my mic on. Just for, for my question to you about it, they would have to vacate the school for three years regardless?
Well, if they're rebuilding it, and that's what I'm saying, once it is, is determined that they have assessed it, and it's going to be a school, and basically, I think we heard it loud and clear, that the parents were saying, okay, if you've decided that we can build it on the site and everything, that they're okay with it. You know, you're gonna say, we're gonna build us a school, and we're building it there, it's okay to move our children when, as they're building the school, that's okay, and then they can come back. They were okay with that.
So, it sounds like the only difference in the two motions is the two years potential difference.
Not the capacity here.
I'm sorry, I need to ask the audience not to clarify, the board has to clarify, thank you.
No, you're saying, when you're saying close, you're doing a formal thing, saying you're gonna close their school. This is not saying I'm gonna close their school. No, that's, that's not the same thing. I'm not doing the formal closing of the school. My motion did not say close the school.
Okay, I'm just asking, the timing difference is about two years.
Well, if they build a school, we usually can build a school within two years.
Yeah, the demolition is one year, and then build for two. Because normally, we don't demolish in, within that two years.
But, well, we can get one build within 18 months.
And where would you suggest that we move any school that would have sufficient space?
Yeah, because you, it's been proven, we do not have enough seats at Wyancoff to put those children. I'm saying STEM seats. So, wherever we find we've got those STEM seats, because there is not enough adequate seats at Wyancoff for 400 students, so, don't, I, I'm saying-
I'm just asking you, where do you suggest? Because I don't think any of our elementaries have 400 seats.
Well, we may find that it may be, at the time, we've gotta wait to see what this alignment does. We've got to see what, what we're looking at, and see what, where we're standing at that time. I, I don't wanna promise these, unlike some people, I don't wanna promise something I can't keep. So, I wanna see where we're at, at that time.
Okay, other questions on Ms. Carpenter's motion?
So, your motion doesn't-
We will vote on the motion if there's any other, after any other discussion.
I, I think the motion for Ms. Carpenter needs to pinpoint where the children would go.
Where we've got the seats at that time. We gotta see where, what the, the study shows, and let's see where we're at at that time.
Yep, that doesn't sound very precise.
Yeah, we don't have any, I, it's rare that we would ever have an elementary school, other than a brand-new one that would have empty seats.
Well, we may, it may be, it may end up to be Royal Oaks, it may end up, right now, Royal Oaks, but, and right now, they're not offering the STEM. It may end up, they end up offering the STEM. When I first approached Dr. Lauter and asked him, can it be a STEM, I was told, no, it's not going to be a STEM. Now, it may change, it may become a STEM, and it may have the available seats. Right now, it's not a STEM. Is it going to become a STEM? I don't know. So, I can't promise these people it'll have STEM seats, and I'm not gonna-
Did we keep, did we keep the kids together when they went to Royal Oaks? Did they stay as a Royal Oaks group, or were they mixed in with the?
See, Bogart, they all stayed together.
Were they mixed, or they stayed together?
But I'm not gonna promise something like that.
Well, if they stay together, you can have, it doesn't matter, they have a STEM program.
When we moved the students from Royal Oaks to Bogart, we maintained two schools in a school.
I know we did, but we kept them all together.
But we still moved them to another school.
Yeah, we did, and they all stayed together, and we were able to do that.
Right.
See, and we may be able to do that, but they were all STEM.
Well, that sounds like what you're asking them to do.
We did not have a STEM program at Bogart, they just moved to Bogart.
But they didn't have a STEM at that time, but that's what I'm saying.
They, they had an arts program, and they started the arts program over there. You can do the same thing.
But we wait to see who has the seats more.
And this, this is a limited time we have right now to make a swing, swing school together, so.
But I don't think Wyancoff has enough seats, 400 students, to make them-
And you know, there's actually some Wyancoff students who are located in the Wyancoff District at Beverly Hills right now, they would just go back to their own school, so.
But that's, that's my plan.
Yes, Vince?
I don't know that deciding where all the students would go after the study is completed is possible to do at this time.
Well, Ms. Carpenter-
I think that-
Yeah, Ms. Carpenter put it in her motion, I think that's why the question-
I'll, I'll take, I'll take it out if, I mean, I'm just, you know, a lot of the parents were, STEM was very important to them, and that's why I wanted to put it in there, that they, but if y'all want me to take that part out, I'll be more than happy to delete that part. But I, I, that, that was having sufficient seats, and that was a question a lot of them had, because everybody kept saying, they wanted to move them to Wyancoff, and there was not enough seats there. But if you want me to remove that part of my proposal, I'll be more than happy if that makes people more comfortable with my proposal, I'll be more than happy to do that.
I think it would, I think it would bring some clarity to your proposal.
All right, I will remove section five to make my-
Well, they don't have your proposal in front of us.
All right, I can give you-
Do you have copies?
I can, yes, I do. Remove number five to make, for clarification, Adam. Remove number five to make it more clerical, because I want to make sure, I'll remove number five, because that's, Rob has one, to make it more clerical, because that seems to be, and we did take number three and combine that with number one, so there is-
Four was combined with one.
Number four, we put it with number one, so to, so there's no, because some of you seem to have problems with that, take number five off, and-
Okay, the other question I have, Ms. Carpenter, is, the county has given us clear direction that any construction needs to increase capacity due to growth, so that it is not only replacing, but it is increasing. So, that's the other, I guess, question I have about your number four, is that it says for 400 students, that would not address the county funding requirement.
Well, now there, I'm gonna hold, and there I do have, and plenty of statistics on the smaller schools, I, I have to, I have to hold firm on that one.
How would you address all the people in the rest of the county who-
We have a-
Go to schools that are higher.
We have, well, now, that was choices that have been made a long time ago. And, and I have stated more than one time, we can have a combination of both, and that, on that site, 400 has worked fine, and we, as a board, we have supported many things where we have smaller, Performance Learning Center, Early College, plans that, very special-
Not traditional environment.
We have done that with Coltrane Webb, with some of our other schools, and we have had those, and we have supported it. And smaller schools, they are safer places for our students, they're a more positive challenge environment, we've seen higher achievement, higher graduation, fewer discipline problems, a much grace, greater satisfaction for the families, the students, and the teachers. And it's not like we're starting something from scratch, it's already been there. And that, that is the community schools, and I think there's something we should keep. And why not have both? And I, and I don't think, and I, these, the, the community have supported the other schools, the bigger schools, they supported those people, why can't you support them? And I, I don't have any part, and smaller, smaller schools are more protected places for both the adults and the students, and it's, it's a very good environment for the teachers, because they can have the one-on-one when it's needed, and I, I support the smaller ones.
Any other comments? Ready for the question?
Call for question, ma'am.
A Rob?
Yeah, I also support what Carolyn's saying and intention, I think there is a place for smaller schools in our community, and I think it's important that kids have a, well, families have an option at the smaller school, that, you know, students and teachers know every kid by name, and I think that's important, that we have that. By closing a small school or making these things larger, you lose that, and I don't think, I want, I think that's the right precedent to set. I think currently, with the construction of Royal Oaks, and with the construction of Hickory Ridge, you know, if we have 14,000, what, 400 elementary school students, we've added, what, 100 last year? If you add all these capacities up, it's over 16,392 elementary school seats. I don't think we're at a crunch for elementary school seats. Granted, we haven't been advised on how many classrooms that we're gonna need with the, with this state law that's out there, but it seems, you know, there's not really a need to say, hey, I've gotta double the size of an elementary school at this point. Where we're at, we're only adding 100, you know, 100 kids, 100 elementary school kids were added last year, 200 the year before that. It would be a while before you even get close to the 16,000.
And, just one other comment, we know eventually these numbers, just like the other counties around us, the numbers are gonna start decreasing. We shouldn't keep building and building, and we've seen this with some of the other numbers, and my last comments, there was three comments that were made by, when we had our comments. Terry Smith stated, smaller is not better. Anna Marie Schuman said, let your gut do the talking. I agree. And Chris Hughes, Chris Hughes said, we would be cutting out the heart of the community if we closed Beverly Hills, and I agree 100%, thank you.
Okay, just as a clarification for board members, based on our mobile unit population today, we have 52 elementary mobile units, so to say we have enough classroom seats is not accurate. That is about 1,300 elementary students in mobile units today. So, that's important to remember when we look at not building for growth.
I'm using, I'm using the core capacities that the school, that the system has provided us, and the program capacity, I guess, which is, which is movable.
Yeah, well, the, one thing with the core capacity, we have to understand, that's when children come to us in perfect quantities in that district, so that's why, then we have to go into mobile units.
You're gonna have a brand-new school that'll help alleviate those mobile units in the south part of the-
I'm sorry, you-
You have a brand-new school in the south part of the county that will leave the mobile units at Harrisburg and Patriots.
Those, those mobile units, yes.
So, those will be eliminated. There's, you know, again, I think it's a very few schools that we actually have a big issue with the mobiles.
Okay, board members, all in favor?
Madam Chair, I believe Ms. Carpenter wanted to revise her motion-
Okay.
And, and said what she'd like to do, that would require a confirmation on the second, and, and I would strongly suggest that the motion be restated for clarity.
All right, restate.
And I, I was trying to take careful notes, if you'd like, I'll, I'll take a stab at it.
Okay, go ahead, you have, go ahead. I'll let you do it.
All right. I believe the restated motion, that, Mr. Walter, you seconded?
Yes.
Okay. I believe it was to keep Beverly Hills Elementary School open, and get a third-party assessment for renovation, or a new school on-site for 400 students. Second, to keep Beverly Hills Elementary School Community STEM Program open. Third, to put Beverly Hills Elementary School on a 10-year plan for replacement. Number five, you took out, and six was to add Beverly Hills Elementary School to the proper realignment program.
Right.
And that's your revised motion, seconded by Mr. Walter, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, sorry.
And we're comfortable with the, the amount for the study? Is that not in there, I guess? There's not an exceed?
There's no amount on here for the study?
Do you want to add that in there? Is not to exceed $20,000?
Not to exceed $20,000.
Okay, so you both agree to that modification?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the second part of number one would be, number one would read then, keep Beverly Hills Elementary School open, get a third-party assessment, not to exceed $20,000 for renovation or a new school on-site for 400 students.
Right.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
And that was seconded by Mr. Walter with that revision?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Vince?
Aye.
Okay. All opposed?
Nay.
So, the motion fails three to four. That brings us back to the original motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, but- There might be an opportunity to blend a little bit on this motion that Ms. Carpenter had, plus the motion that we, that I originally put before us. However, I have some questions regarding keeping Beverly Hills motion and Ms. Carpenter's motion. How long were you anticipating keeping Beverly Hills open, and what is your recourse with the, the, the systems that we have, we know are just around the corner from failing, and where do we put those children? The second part to that question is, if we add them to the realignment program, we can only add them to the realignment program for a fixed amount of time, at which point we have to find a place for the students when we decide that it's time to renovate and, to renovate that, you know, rebuild that school, we have to find a place for those students. We won't have a place for those students, because we'll have already done realignment, and we won't just be keeping seats open in any one specific school. Now, do you want to give permission to the cropper folks to keep Royal Oaks open? Is that what implied in your thing, is that Royal Oaks has to stay half, half-occupied for the duration until which time your keeping BHS open expires? And that's an indefinite amount of time. So, when I begin to look at this, there's other things that are, that are implied in your, in your proposal, and, and part of that is the realignment that we have to deal with. So, are we going to not use the swing school and delay the use of it for, add and fight them until, until we have the money to build this school, which, at which point, it may fail? We may have some major system failures at that point.
Mike?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
How about we get the study done before we make that call? Then we even know, we don't even know if we, the school fit on that site until a study is done to make even that determination. Once you have that information, then you can ask those, those valid questions.
Yeah, I was gonna say, keep in mind, the study is only to build a new school, it is not to renovate.
I think they can tell us either way, I mean, I don't think, they can give us an estimate either way, it's probably gonna come out higher to renovate, but-
Yeah, I don't think we would get that.
I think the study can include both.
But the study's intent is only for a new build, based on the challenges on the site, so.
Well, we're asked them-
I'm, I'm flexible with that, but I still think that we need to wait until we have a study, and we have some numbers, real numbers. I mean, the numbers that we've had here are all over the scale, so I really don't know what, what, what to use and what, what to base a decision on, so, it's, I think it's important that our board has that information before we make the, go, make a determination going forward.
The next discussion point that I have is on the size. Currently, Coltrane Webb is seating close to 500 students, and we consider that a small school. I do not feel, feel that that is outside of the possibility of looking at the site Beverly Hills to be a 500-student school. That allows us to incorporate the neighborhood, and if we want to create a magnet program there, we can continue to do so. But we, we've done so with Coltrane Webb, and everyone is, is very happy with the results at Coltrane Webb, and, and the way that school has matriculated, so I don't see where you should have objection with a 500-person school at, at, at the Beverly Hills site.
Where did I come, where, I had saw 300 and something with Coltrane, how many do we have at Coltrane? I saw three nine, three something.
Tim just said 470.
How many are coming in?
Four, 470.
Maybe that was, that was at four.
470-ish.
Four seven, okay. Well, I, I might could go 500, but I'm, I'm not gonna go no 800, which would-
Well, our proposal only said 500.
At the minimum.
Yeah, at the minimum, we just said 500, you know, looking at a-
I might squeeze that, but, but every time I do that, then I see somebody jump up to 800, and I ain't gonna do that.
Well, that site, we don't think we'll support.
But will that make it feasible on that site or not? I mean, that's, that's part of the issue.
Right, well, you do the feasibility to see.
If a 500-seat doesn't, doesn't fit, but a 400-seat does, then-
Yeah, and that's why we keep saying about the feet, let these people-
But I, I think remaining small in the small school- But I, I think remaining small in the small school category, I think, is five hundred or less, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, five hundred is usually considered a small.
Mr. Schumaker, do you want to adjust your motion?
What are y'all thinking? I'm concerned about adding the Cropper, this to the Cropper realignment for one reason, is if, if you realign schools and you keep one school open that's got four hundred students in it, or three hundred and, you know, twelve, fourteen, you now have to find a place for those if the stu, if the, if the school has a major failure. Because we're not going to be putting a bunch of money into renovating equipment in that building that, that literally is high-dollar equipment. We also are faced with the risk of having to move those students mid-year, and where do we move them? And that's, that's, that's the biggest risk that I have in my mind for that school, because, because there are really major issues, more issues there than we have at Coltron Webb or at, or Brown, as far as systems, so.
Question for Dr. Lard, does Cropper have the amount, the class size needs with the new law? Do they know what those, that? Because if they don't have that, how they, how are they supposed to do a realignment?
Is Cropper aware of the class size change?
Yes, very aware.
Yes, because he has indicated the loss of seats that will come because of that, so yes.
Then they would almost need to really have Beverly Hills in that equation, or not in that equation, but.
So.
What, what did you just say? Wait a minute, I didn't hear Rob's last. I think then, if, if that's the case, they really need to have Beverly Hills stay in the equation if they don't, to determine these class size needs, instead of just eliminating that, because they may need that option, we may need those seats.
But if you have Beverly Hills in the equation, and then you go through a three-year demolition slash rebuild, you've lost those seats for three years, and you haven't, you don't have a swing space for them.
Well, we're not increasing our elementary school seats at a, at a high enough rate to, there should still be seats as long as we don't push this thing out five, ten years.
And I would just say there, when we look at, for example, Weddington Hills is getting an eight-plex this summer of mobile units. So, and they'll still have the remaining three. They're moving some of the ones to make room for the eight-plex, but they're leaving. I think they're gonna end up with eleven in the new school year, so we, we don't have the room. I guess we've just become accustomed to having the mobile units, so.
Can we repeat the prospect of having empty seats indefinitely at Royal Oaks? Because I just need clarification for my purposes. And here's a quick recall of what little I know, and I'm not trying to make a comment about previous boards, but when Bethel was built, everyone thought that Corning was going to bring a great deal of an increase in the population in that area. And economically, that didn't happen. I'm simplifying, I apologize. But the biggest criticism we get is that there are empty seats at Bethel. Well, that's because the economy changed, we couldn't foresee that, and the growth did not occur in Bethel. But we're still responsible for those extra seats that are not being used, as if we could have done anything, you know, to change that situation. Can we clarify the, these ideas about the prospect of having extra seats unoccupied at Royal Oaks?
Yeah, Ms. Carpenter has been at the chair vice-chair meetings when we talk about what's coming up on our, our business and on the commissioner's business and whatnot. And the commissioners have been fairly clear, the county management, that we can't hold seats open for a future what-if. So seats, children will be redistricted at Royal Oaks if we do not use it as a swing school. See, there, there's, we can, right now, or in a year, we can claim it as a swing school space. And I'll say kind of not be in the keeping seats open, where we're funding empty seats at both schools. If it fills up, then, then there is no swing space for Beverly Hills. So, so that, that's part of really, without it being in the motion, that's part of the implication we're making tonight, is if we do not use it as a swing space, within a year after it opens, the redistricting needs to move children in there. And some of those children may be from the current Beverly Hills district, because you know how we are when, anytime we do redistricting, it kind of slides across the county, up and down, and left to right. So there will probably be some, some students who would still go to Royal Oaks on the edges, so.
And it is a magnet program, so it is an arts program. We don't offer arts before, now we do. You know, there's a music program, there's a dance program, there's a.
No, I think it's gonna be great.
There's a lot of cool things at the, the school that will attract students.
And I think you went on a tour this week, didn't you, Rob?
I, I did. There's still work in progress, but a lot of cool things, it's very similar to Odell.
At Royal Oaks, yeah.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, a quick question from me. So let's fast forward to November of this year, and there is a catastrophic failure that Mr. Schumaker referenced, where we simply cannot put more money into Beverly Hills. Where, what will we do on November, the week before Thanksgiving, with the kids that are currently in Beverly Hills, and we feel as a board that they need to move out? Where would they go? What will we do?
This year, I believe they would go to Royal Oaks. If it was this year, before next May or June. After next June, it becomes a split, so.
You're saying it would split the population of Beverly Hills?
Yes. It would be a, almost like a temporary redistricting.
Without those families and kids being able to stay together?
Correct.
Potentially.
Who does that? Who determines that?
I mean, staff will make recommendations based on what's where.
Staff is doing that, not the Cropper people?
I don't think Cropper would do it unless, you know, I say maybe November's a bad time. What if it happened in February, when we already had the results delivered? So Cropper might be able to quickly adjust in November. In February, it's for, for staff to figure out how to place children in the best available seats in the best proximity, so. And then at that point, it's unplanned bus routes.
But the original motion at least attempts to keep kids together from Beverly Hills in that motion, doesn't it?
I mean, I, I think so.
It seems like that the proposal.
Yeah.
Like Royal Mulder.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I hope you all know, when, we have spent a lot of hours figuring out how we can do this and when we can cut into the ten-year plan. We have studied, we have tweaked, we have adjusted. Even when we were advised, it's not a good idea. So we thought this was a, a good interim proposal, so. Any other discussion? Mr. Schumaker?
Cindy?
Yes, sir?
Your, your comment earlier in relation to the county commissioners, just wanted to clarify, they have set forth a, I don't know about a mandate, but their desire and whatever we do to add seats, is that accurate?
Yes, they want us to be peeling away at the, at reducing mobile units with every construction project we have. And Ms. Carpenter, I think, can agree that's the direction.
I don't, I don't know how closing Beverly Hills aligns with that initiative. It would be removing seats.
Yes, but it, it removes the risk and the liability. This summer, they are funding, replacing two major AC units, J. M. Freeze and, where's the other one? Mount Pleasant, Mount Pleasant High School, right? Yeah. And so Mount Pleasant High School now is, what, about twenty-five, twenty-six years old? Huh? Ninety-one? Okay. So go, so looking at twenty-seven years old, so J. M. Freeze actually had an, an air conditioning failure, so this past, I guess in the last two weeks, was it? So thank heavens, we have that air conditioning funded by the county, but they can't do more than a couple of those at a time. Do you all, Ms. Ryan, would you remember the, the dollar amount for, I'm gonna say it's, involves several million dollars for the AC for those two schools? I'm thinking it's three to four million dollars. So these are, are large facilities that are very expensive to redo, major systems on. And that's not even a renovation to any classroom space or anything, that's just a utility renovation, so. Any other discussion? Mr. Schumaker, you wanna modify anything?
Well, originally, when we started talking about this, over the last two months, my thinking was around finding a way to gut through till 2020, June 30, 2020. I know that puts a lot of risk on our maintenance group in trying to maintain that school open until that point, but I didn't feel like there was a much longer than that that we could do it. In the meantime, I would, I would be willing to adjust this motion to keeping it open till June 30th, 2020, but keeping the rest of the items that we have in, in here and not add Cropper to the realignment, because if we add Cropper to, add Beverly Hills to the Cropper realignment, then, you know, we, we'd close it in two years, so that would kind of be.
So what is your proposal on?
And then ask Cropper to keep the spaces open in Royal, in Royal Oaks as a swing just in case, and that would keep the school together, and then that would give us time to do the due diligence on the, on the A and E, and, and then allow us to get this into the ten-year plan. And so it would be basically everything that we stated in our motion, except changing the date to 2020. And, and, well, we keep everything else in the original motion. So I would like to substitute our motion, the, the motion that was originally, amend the.
Yeah.
Amend the motion that was offered originally to June 2020. Everything else, basically, is this, is the same as, as the original motion, which is the same as what Ms. Carpenter had, once she, she gave us the five hundred. So the only difference between Ms. Carpenter's motion and this new, this motion that I would propose is that we stretch the date, number one, changes to 2020, and we remove the Cropper real, remove it from the Cropper realignment, so we do have a swing space in case we do have a major failure, and we do have to move the students in a moment's notice over to.
Yeah, I would just tell you, that's gonna be a tough sell on growth, on funding growth seats. I mean, I have to say, I agree with you, but that's gonna be a tough sell on, when we ask for mobile units at elementary schools, so. Hmm? Yeah. So, so you've amended your motion?
I've amended my motion, but if there's not a second, you know.
I'll, I'll certainly second it for.
Okay, so the two amends are on the year to June 2020, and to keep Beverly Hills, I'm sorry, keep Royal Oaks, do not use all the capacity.
Right, maintain its capacity for the Beverly Hills.
Okay, now, just a clarification on that. I believe that the Cropper Committee is considering straightening out some boundaries, which we've looked at before, on the perimeter of the Beverly Hills District. So sometimes where there's awkward spaces for buses to cross highways and whatnot, or major roads. So can they still keep it in for these small segments? One is, I think, on the west of, west side of 29?
I think that they can keep whatever. My thought is, is the Cropper realignment should look at what makes the best sense for them, knowing that they're still the heart of the Beverly Hills community, that needs to be maintained for, for the future.
Okay, so the amended motion has extending until 2020, and then maintain the majority of the open capacity. Is that correct, Mr. Schumaker?
Yes, ma'am.
And then maintain the maj, uh, majority of open capacity at Royal Oaks for a swing school.
So we're just pushing the closure till the twen, June 2020?
Twenty twenty.
A year, one more year.
Yes.
One more year.
Okay, so if that motion, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Harrison, on the amendment?
If, if it would be a hard sell, should we vote on it as?
Yeah, I'll just carry, Ms. Carpenter was there with me, she heard all the.
The reality is, the money comes from the county commission.
Yes. The, the benefit to extending to 2020 gives us is we need every one of you who is here today, and everyone who has sent an email, or called, or whatever, to put your energy behind the state bond for school construction and/or the referendum to add a quarter-cent sales tax for the purpose of school construction that the legislature will consider next year. But then it has to be a voted referendum in 2020. So those are the keys to us adding this to the ten-year plan. And if you think a quarter-cent sales tax doesn't matter, it is worth about eight million dollars a year to our county. So let everybody who comes to Concord Mills from other places add a quarter of a penny when they buy something.
Well, I've been leaving it open and not putting the word "close," and just letting them do that study would mean a lot more. And I, I can't vote for it this way.
All right, can we come, can we come back until?
What's that?
So the word "closure."
So the word "closure" is giving you a hard time, hard burn?
How about, how about delay?
I, how about, well, how about the word vacating the current Beverly Hills Elementary School?
That, no, that still means "close," so I don't.
Well, we're not closing it as an entity, which is why we didn't go through closures when we moved Odell, when we moved.
Royal Oaks.
Royal Oaks, because we vacated a prior property and went back to it.
We didn't ever say that word, and we just, we just, we rebuilt it, and we moved them, and we never used that word. I, I just don't like that word.
I thought politicians were not supposed to kick cans down the road.
Well, when you have the, when you need the information, and we don't have the numbers, I think those numbers will be very helpful in making that.
So, Mr. Schwartz, can we say approve vacating?
You may, yes.
Why do we have to say anything?
Did you have a, did you have a, Ms. Furtmark, did you actually have a second on this?
You do not have a second on this.
On the.
On what my proposal is.
Not yet. I mean, David was asking a question before he said that. Can we say approve vacating? Do you want to amend your motion one more time? We sincerely are going to work to get this on the ten-year capital plan. We just have to know where the monies come from.
Do we have to have county buy-in or any plan to come up with?
Well, money, yeah, county's money. Their checkbook.
What about a temporary relocation?
Well, we're, I'm saying we're vacating the current building, is why I was using that word. Because we don't know, we don't have the results of knowing, can we fit a growth school, even a minimal growth school on the property? Although I did go out last night to take one more drive around, and there's an awful lot of land at the bottom of that hill, that we could shift where the, where the school building is.
Relocating students that 2020, do that be more comfortable?
All right, so how about this? Approve the vacating of the current Beverly Hills facility effective June 20th, twenty, June 30th, 2020, and then the rest of it would stay as it is.
I think using the word "facility" as opposed to "school" implies bricks and mortar, not the concept of the community of school, so I'm comfortable with that. Using the word "facility" implies. Using the word "facility" implies the school.
Okay. So, can you, Mr. Schumaker, can you read that to me again?
The first item on the replacement proposal I amended is to say, approve the vacating of the current Beverly Hills Elementary School facility effective June 2020. It actually would be June 30, 2020.
And I'll second that.
What was that again?
Approve the vacating of the current Beverly Hills School facility effective in June 2020, or effective June 30, 2020. Then the corollary to that is to maintain enough seats.
Well, there won't be enough seats. The assumption is that some students will choose the STEM option at Wyncroft.
Oh, well, I'm saying enough seats at Rose, at Royal Oaks.
Yeah, I don't know if we can say enough seats, because that's hard to define. People will choose, so the Wyncroft kids may choose to go back to the Wyncroft STEM program that they have now.
Okay. So we just leave it as it is?
Yes. Yes, Vince?
I think adding the word "temporary" makes sense. I think if that's the intent, then let's go ahead and say it. If it's not the intent, then...
Yeah, we just can't, we can do that. We just can't define the length of "temporary," because we don't know when the money will come. So we can do that. Are you guys okay with that?
I'd like to see the word "temporary" added as well.
Where's that going to be?
Temporary.
Temporary. Where's "temporary"?
First, approve the temporary, what did he say? Said "vacating"?
Well, we are vacating the old, the old school, so we have to be careful with that wording.
I had not been told to move. I had not been told to vacate.
So could you say the, approve the temporary vacating of the current Beverly Hills Elementary School facility?
I think then we need to say "site," because it's not going to be the same facility. The facility will eventually go away. So I think we need to approve the temporary vacating of the current BHES site.
Site.
Well, we don't know that for sure, because if that, people come back and say, hey, we can put something there. We don't know if we're going to vacate it or not.
No, it's...
This is for students.
Yeah, this is for not doing renovations. Because the way that, I inquired to some professionals, as well as other people, have said, and they said that the big thing to look at with doing major renovations on something that was already pieced together, this person knew where Beverly Hills was and was familiar with how it was put together, is that you only get a, you get a shorter period of time out of a major renovation. So you may get 20 to 30 years out of your $10 million, if that's the number. Whereas if you take it down and give a new slate and build it back up, you may spend 20 or 25 and get 70 years out of it. So you're spending today's dollars, and you get a much longer time out of it. So that was a good, that gave me a good visual on why it's smarter to do a new build.
So now I've reworded this, does this sound correct? Approve the temporary vacating of the current Beverly Hills Elementary School site on June 30, 2020?
And I want, can you take out the 30th? Because we may close it on the 15th or something. We don't want to be, go against our word.
Okay. I'll just say in June.
Just June 2020.
June 2020. All right.
So that's the only change to the original motion?
That is the only change that I had made.
I will second that.
What about the design in January 2019? We would still do that?
The high-level design. That's just to say, is the site workable?
Yeah, because what we're trying to do is get, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Carolyn, what we were trying to do is get some type of budgetary estimate, so we could get the county to bake it into future budgets. And if we wait too long, and we wanted them to know what's coming, so that we could bake this into the 10-year plan to figure out with our other school needs and with some of their school, with some of their facility needs, and also we're dealing with Kannapolis, they've got to bake all this in. So we wanted to make sure that they had some kind of idea, and this commissioning would not put any restrictions on them. They would just go out and look at the site and try to give us the best idea of how much it would cost and what could be put there. And so it would be an open-ended study to try to give us, we would just basically give them, the only criteria would be either a 500, or a 25% increase core capacity, which is about 500 students, or maintain 400 and allow the creation of, or a space for another department within Dr. Launer's organization, because we are stretched for space for some of our other departments.
And we do have those non-school spaces in our 10-year plan. We just never get to them. So this may be an opportunity, if we can't do it for the core capacity of the school, we do, we cover something else there. So. And just to, so we have a motion and a second on the amendment?
I'm certainly seconding.
Wait.
Yes.
Can we get clarification on what the changes are now for number one?
Just the first sentence.
Mr. Schwartz, the changes were, to number one was approve the temporary vacating of the current Beverly Hills Elementary School site in June 2020. And that is the only change that I've made to the proposal that we have before us.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the amendment?
Excuse me.
Yes.
May I have another point of clarification? Earlier, there was some mention of reserving a majority of the open capacity for Beverly Hills Elementary School at Royal Oaks Elementary School. Is that not, that's not...
You're not saying do that? You had mentioned that.
I had mentioned it, but I had just withdrawn that.
Okay.
Because I think it's implied that cropper will, I think we can work with them on that. I don't want to put that in there.
Okay. Okay. And just...
Explain three, because I think they really need to understand, because you're saying you're going to put, place a new, on 10-year plan to start at the earliest in July 2022 with a two-year construction. Explain that first part of that sentence. What is the caveat that it would not be put on that plan?
Funding, availability, which always is the question.
It says the goal for space achievable if CCS administration numbers can accommodate not building a new elementary for greater growth seats. What are you basically saying at that point?
That if, for some reason, we have an explosion of population increase, which we're not anticipating, and you know how we reevaluate every year?
Then they would not get...
That that would be a problem.
They would not get their school.
Well, at that time. But keep in mind, we have Hickory Ridge Elementary opening. We, this, this proposal says that our Brown would open with the additional seats ahead. It may only be a year, but they would open ahead of a new Beverly Hills, because we need to get the growth. And something that people forget is that there have been 300 or so kids, maybe closer to 400, children who have been displaced from the downtown Concord that you believe are, you know, Beverly Hills is a part of. They are much closer to downtown Concord, and they have been displaced for years. And unfortunately, people forget about that. We're trying to resolve that. So. And for those of you who don't know, that's the Logan community. So.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, with this change, I would, one additional bullet point to number two for legal compliance, and that would be that the staff would assure compliance as may be necessary with the requirements of General Statute 115C-521, excuse me, 115C-521.
And can you tell us?
That is that before, if a Board of Education is considering building a new school building to replace an existing school building, the Board shall not invest any new construction money in the new building unless it submits plans to the State Department of Public Construction and goes through the analysis of renovating rather than replacing.
And I'll support that. And I think that's probably why, part of the study would need this to be...
We've actually done that already.
Not, not for, not with submitting anything to the state.
Oh, okay. Just the submission. Okay.
With 115C what?
So the additional language I'm suggesting in number two would be to assure legal compliance, that is as follows. Another bullet point that would say the staff would assure compliance as may be necessary with the requirements of General Statute 115-C-521.
Okay.
My only question, but what if they don't have enough seats for the STEM children at Wyncroft? You still haven't convinced me on that.
The parents would need to select, I believe, right? They would need to say they want to do STEM as opposed to going to the temporary school. So.
But you got...
Because if you keep in mind, Beverly Hills, everybody didn't select STEM. They were given STEM a couple of years ago. So there may be folks who have other interests if it wasn't right there. So. Are we ready for a vote? Okay. All of those in favor, in the many amended...
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Do you have a second from Mr. Harrison?
Yes. Mr. Harrison? Yes, he already did.
Okay. For clarification, may I make sure we got this right?
Mm-hmm.
What I've got is that the proposal, the motion is for, to approve numbers one through four as originally presented with these changes. Number one, at the outset, would be changed to read as follows. Approve the temporary vacating of the current Beverly Hills Elementary School site effective June 2020. And number two would have an additional bullet point added at the end to read, staff to assure compliance as may be necessary with the requirements of General Statute 115C-521. And everything else would remain the same. Is that correct?
I think so.
Correct.
Question. Can we, is there anything that prohibits us to revisit this thing once we have the numbers in the study?
No.
So we can bring it up again and revise it if necessary?
Yes.
Okay.
So that is your, that's the revised motion. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you've got a second from Mr. Harrison on that? Okay. Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the revised motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Rob? Yes? Carolyn? Vince, do you support the revised motion?
No, ma'am.
No.
Okay. So all in favor, say aye. We have those. The nays are...
No.
Mr. Palmer, Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we have a motion, or a vote of five to two, and the motion passes. Thank you. Okay. We are now, oops, where the Board needs to convene into closed session. And pursuant to General Statute 143-318-11A3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged, and pursuant to General Statute 143-318-11A5, to establish or to instruct the public bodies...
So moved.
...staff, as noted in the agenda, as it's getting noisy in here.
So moved.
So that was Dr. Kirk and Mr. Harrison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Vince, we will call you back from closed.
That sounds fine.
Okay. Thank you.